If you have them on, we're gonna have our invocation first and then after that, we're gonna have the pledge to allegiance. We've got Reverend George Lee here to do our invocation. Reverend Lee has been in the pastoral world in Goldsboro since I was a kid. I can't, I've heard his name from a baby up. So it's an honor, it's a pleasure to have you here. And after he says his prayer, he wanted to make a couple of comments. So please come up, sir, if you would, please stand.
Father, spring. Our heavenly Father, we are blessed, how thankful we are in our hearts that we live in a nation like this. We're not perfect, but we have so many things for which we ought to be grateful for. I personally am thankful that I had instilled in my mind as a little boy in Mississippi by my mom and dad, and they taught me to be on time, to pay my bills, to be honorable, to be honest. I am thankful that for the past forty-four years, I have been a resident of Goldsboro and Wayne County. This has been a wonderful place to live. There are so many tremendous people who are here. None of us is perfect, but we do have a perfect God. I thank you for these members of this council. Their job is not easy. They cannot solve every problem. They cannot do everything that everybody wants, but at least we have open debate, we have opportunity for discourse and discussion, and I pray for them, that your spirit will lead and guide. Thank you for America. Thank you for the liberty, for the freedom, for those who've gone before, for those who paved the way, for those who made it so much easier for us today. And so I pray, Father, that your spirit will lead and guide us. Oh, how we need your help, and I pray that you will supply it. You've never failed us, and you will not now. And I pray that you will bless the deliberations of this session tonight and be with each person. Give us civility in our minds, give us clean thoughts that we might be able to clearly enunciate what we think and how we feel, and may we be a blessing. Thank you for Goldsboro, thank you for Wayne County, thank you for this place that I have called my home for forty-four years. In the name of our Savior, we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend Lee. Did you want to make some comments as well before we do the pledge?
Would you like me to do that now?
Sure.
I would be very brief. It is dangerous to say, a preacher would like to say a few words.
Okay.
I would like to just thank this council for the work that you do. You are men who have been invested with tremendous challenge, and I know that your road is not easy. I came to Goldsboro in March of nineteen seventy-three to pastor Victory Through Baptist Church on Wayne Memorial Drive. It was the greatest ministry that I had, twenty-one and a half years, and Ben Strickland, no, Mrs. Gaylor was the mayor when I came to Goldsboro, and then followed by maybe Tommy Gibson, and then Ben Strickland and others. And so I have been here with you before. It's been a while, but I will leave with pleasant thoughts. I am thankful that during my lifetime, I never had a speeding ticket, I've never been arrested, I've never spent a night in one of the fine jails in eastern North Carolina. But I know those things are necessary. And so I just thought, I'm moving back to Tennessee in just a couple of weeks. My house is being sold, my wife went to heaven about two years ago, so I'm moving back to the area from which I came. And so this just works out perfectly for me to be able to say, "Thank you, Goldsboro. Thank you, friends and neighbors. You have been a great blessing to me." On the biggest day that we had at our church, and I'm almost there, I preached a sermon entitled, "America's Greatest Need." It has the Goldsboro letterhead with Ben Strickland writing a letter inside. And so if someone would please come, I would like to give each of you gentlemen tonight a copy of the message that I delivered to the largest crowd that I ever spoke to on I Love America Day. So may God bless you. I know we struggle, we survive, life is not always easy, decisions are difficult to make, but you'll make them. We will make it, and may God bless you, and may God bless America. Thank you very much for this opportunity to speak to your audience.
Thank you, sir, and best luck in your future endeavors.
Thank you, sir.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Allen.
Here.
Mayor President Foster.
Present.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Rollins.
Here.
Councilmember Stevens.
Here.
Councilmember Ryan.
Here.
Councilmember A. Pop.
Here. We're all here. We have approval of the minutes from the work session regular meeting of March 20th of two thousand seventeen.
Move to the...
All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries, or minutes were passed. All right, under presentations, first we've got the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency presentation, and I saw Representative Bell and some members from the Housing Finance booth, so if y'all will come up, and Chaco, you gonna do this with them?
She didn't know.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'll speak very quickly. My name is Scott Farmer. I'm representing the Housing Finance Agency here tonight. We're here today to recognize the city of Goldsboro as one of our longstanding partners in many of our programs, but today we're here to recognize you as one of our dear partners with our disaster recovery efforts in eastern North Carolina. The city of Goldsboro is one of thirty-six organizations that are partnering with us on our disaster recovery efforts after Hurricane Matthew. We're pleased to present you tonight with a phone board check for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which is a down payment towards assisting those folks that were hurt by, or damaged their homes by Hurricane Matthew, to get them back in their homes as quickly as possible. It's part of a fifteen million dollar fund that's available across the state, so we continue to tell folks, it's the hundred and fifty thousand dollars is to get you started, but we want to see as many folks utilize that money as possible. So we asked Representative Bell to come with us tonight. We're gonna have him sign the check, and then we would ask for you all to come forward for a photograph, if you would, please.
Now, before he comes, we just want you to know, we're gonna put you on the calendar. You come back once a month.
If you can get these houses cranking, we'll be happy to come back.
He's a banker, watch it.
That is to the city of Goldsboro now, not...
You did good.
Hey, y'all come up here, come around here. Okay. Y'all do this enough.
We know what to do here.
Oh, good, good. We need somebody to help us.
One more step over the side, we'll balance it out here.
All right, it's on the count of three. One, two, and three.
One more, one, two, three.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, members of council, thank you very much for allowing us to do this this evening. First of all, it's an honor to not only represent eastern North Carolina, but the key districts that I cover, Craven, Greenland, Noronha, Wayne County. I want to say, since I've been in the House, the partnership with Mayor Allen and members of this council and working with Scott and the other folks in the city of Goldsboro's been a wonderful relationship to have. And the key is, is that we've been able to get a lot of stuff accomplished simply because we have a strong working relationship with our federal, state, local, and actually our local municipality level, and we continue that partnership. I will tell you, we're in the budget process right now. We finished the House budget last week. There was a hundred and fifty more million dollars set aside for hurricane relief funding, not just for our area, but for also the wildfires that happened in the western part of the state. And so we'll be looking to finish that in the weeks ahead of time. But the commitment is there from the state, the commitment, we'll be there to make sure that we fully recover, and the partnership that we have here is a vital part of that. So thank y'all very much for everything. Mayor, thank you, and look forward to work with you all in the future. Thank you.
All right, we got you on the calendar, y'all come back, okay? Thank you very much. All right, so next we've got the mayor's youth council senior presentations. Rochelle, you either need to smile or move, 'cause I gotta get a picture of that good-looking group right there. Are y'all looking at me and smiling? I don't see, I see two people not smiling. There you go, you got it. All right. All right, Chaco, you gonna do that too? I'm sorry.
Good evening. Goldsboro Youth Council has had a very productive year. We provided hours of service throughout our community, participated in team-building opportunities, service learning opportunities, and leadership opportunities across the state and locally. Goldsboro Youth Council would like to thank the mayor and the city council for their continuous support. At this time, I'd like to recognize our senior GYC members for the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen year, and Najah Pace will be helping me present certificates. So as I call your name, if you'll come up, please. Diamond Atkinson. Diamond will be attending North Carolina A&amp;T. Emmanuel Martin. Emmanuel will be attending the University of Charlotte. Mary Morton. Mary will be attending East Carolina University. Nia Mott. Nia will be attending the UNC Chapel Hill.
All right. Go Hills!
Did I pronounce that right or wrong? Harala will be attending UNC Chapel Hill as well. Andrew Bolt. Andrew will be attending UNC Asheville. Ty Hammer Yaverton. Ty will be attending Fayetteville State University. Morgan will be attending Penn University, Penn State University.
Penn State.
Mary Dunn. Mary will be attending Methodist University. And Davia Webb. And Davia will be attending UNC Chapel Hill. All right, let's give these seniors a round of applause.
Thank you. If y'all will do me a favor, just starting with you, will you shake our hands coming through this way? We'd just like to shake all of your hands. There you go. Congratulations. Go Hills!
Congratulations.
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 You can sit down. She wants to get your picture.
Now come tell us something surprising.
I get kind of bossy. I'd also like to recognize our executive board this year. Most of our executive were seniors, so if you'll stand at your seat when I call your name, please. Our chair this year was Ms. Davia Webb. Davia also served as a state officer this year and was our... Would you like to tell a little bit about your role?
Okay, so on the state youth council, I recorded the minutes and I took roll call after the meeting, and I just made sure that all the records were straight when we were voting.
Okay. All right, our vice chair this year was Ms. Morgan Yaverton. And our recording secretary was Ms. Navia Dixit. Not sure if she's here. Our corresponding secretary was Mr. Ty Hammer Yaverton. Our sergeant of arms was Ms. Diamond Atkinson. And our treasurer was Mr. Andrew Bolt. And these kids really did a good job. They met with me during the summer, and whenever I called them at the last minute and said, "We gotta have a meeting," they were right here. So, good job. Thank you very much. And as I said, Davia was our state officer last year, and this year we also are fortunate to have another state officer, Mr. Najah Pace. So Najah will be, he will be serving as the sergeant of arms at the state level next year. So we're real fortunate to be able to show off Goldsboro and represent Goldsboro at the state level. Each year, Goldsboro Youth Council gives two five hundred dollar scholarships, and we have a scholarship committee. They go through interviews, they look at their community service, and kind of in a secret, so I get to announce those winners. So when I call your name, come up. Davia Webb. Yeah. I'm gonna give you this. And this you... You want to get the picture? You're good, mate. Sorry. We should have left you up here.
Okay, and our second winner, Ms. Diamond Atkinson.
Okay, I think that's all of our presentations. But in closing, and on behalf of myself and the community relations department, we'd like to leave our seniors with one final thought that I borrowed from the great Dr. Seuss. Always be true to yourself. Remember that you have brains in your head and have feet in your shoes, but only you can steer you any direction you choose. You are now on your way. You know what you know, and you're the one who'll decide where to go. We look forward to seeing the many places that all of you will go. Best wishes.
I do want to take a minute to thank all of you for what you've done for our mayor's youth council. I've met with you several, as other council members have, and y'all are quite an awesome group of kids. We look forward to seeing what you do. You'll do better than we ever even can think about, and I know that. I ask that you come back to Goldsboro, you check in with us and tell us how you're doing, and just always remember community service and helping others, and we look forward to seeing you back soon, okay? Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
And y'all are welcome to stay for more of the meeting, or y'all are welcome not to stay for more of the meeting, whatever y'all prefer, okay? Rochelle, you feeling kind of lonely now, aren't you? While they're clearing out, we have public hearings, which we have none, so we're gonna move over to public hearings, and we're gonna go to the public comment period. I do want to emphasize that we're gonna keep all public comments to three minutes tonight except Ms. Shirley Edwards. Ms. Edwards had asked for extra time tonight because she had some things that she wanted to cover, so we have agreed to let her have extra time. So we're gonna start with Ms. Shirley Edwards, and then anybody else that would like to speak, you're welcome to come. You will be held to three minutes.
Thank you so much, mayor and council.
Good evening.
And good evening to all of you.
Good evening.
I've got four items that I want to talk with y'all about. They're city responsibilities and citizens' responsibilities. Some years ago, the city removed from its budget and service the spraying for mosquitoes in the city of Goldsboro. And with the last few years, with the virus, West Nile, and all these different diseases that we have with the mosquitoes, we, we need to start back spraying for mosquitoes. There is about, and I'm not gonna read them to you, but if you want me to tell you, I'll tell you, there's about eight or ten diseases that comes from mosquito bites, including malaria, which we haven't had in the United States, but we certainly can have, because the mosquitoes have migrated from all over the world. I saw a mosquito the other day, was this long, it frightened me, because I'd never seen that kind of mosquito in North Carolina before. But I am asking tonight that the city would reconsider, I know you're talking about adopting a budget, but you would reconsider spraying, and I've researched four counties in eastern North Carolina where they have fawn and the spraying, and they have safe spraying that they can do in neighborhoods. They say that you don't, that the children go out for thirty minutes or be involved in it, and then it's safe. And we have a mechanism to make citizens aware, not only on your TV, but in your water bills, we send out things to the citizens so we can make them aware. But we need to do something about this, because if we have one child that something happens to, then with the loss and the cost that it will cause, then you, the amount that it would take to start this back again would be a burden on the city and a strain on the county of Wayne and the city of Goldsboro. So I'm asking you tonight to consider resuming spraying for mosquitoes in these neighborhoods. My second item I want to speak tonight on is, some time back, you removed the longevity, and you gave, I believe, the 401K, and that's great for someone who's up in the ranks, that's making good money. But for people that is in grade sixty-three through sixty-six, these are our lowest level workers, that really isn't really a big benefit to them. When we removed the longevity from these persons, it was a one-year sum that they got each year, and they looked forward. I talked to them, I know them. They were, used that money to deal with some big burden issues that they faced. And so when we took it away and come up with the 401, yes, they have that, but if you use the 401 money, you gotta pay it back. That's not really helping somebody who does not have money and is in these sixty-three through sixty-six grades. So I am asking that we look at reinstating something for these low grades. And I know you've talked about doing a study, and that's good, but study is down the road. We need to look at something that's gonna help people now. These people are hurting. Do you know that people in those grades, they have been, some of them here with this city from thirteen to fifteen years, they are not at the midpoint. They are four to five thousand dollars, five thousand dollars less than the midpoint at fifteen years. And so when they retire six, thirty years, they're never gonna reach that. Now, we talk about parity and equity. Where is it for this grade of people? I know what I'm talking about, I know what we can do. I have a master's in personnel administration, I've been a personnel director for the state of North Carolina. I know that we can go in and address these grade levels and not go all the way across and do something. So I'm here on behalf of those. I talk to them, I interact with them, and I know they're suffering. We talk about the trash in the city. We, these sanitation workers, I go out on routes behind them, and I follow them. They clean up the city. They pick up trash that is not even required of them, and we don't give them the credit for it. So let's show them that we care about them. Thirdly, I am requesting that the city of Goldsboro, we implemented some time back, we put in the Goldsboro News August, we said that there were certain initiatives that we would do in the Goldsboro Police Department. I'm asking you to complete those initiatives that you said that you were going to do. That community relations board, that involvement with the community and how we oversight complaints, we need to finish that work. You're never gonna have harmonious relationships with your citizens if you do not have a way that you can answer to them. And when you get a feedback that we looked into it without your involvement or their involvement, then there's a problem. So let's fulfill what we said in the Goldsboro News August. I don't know all what you said you were gonna do, but it was in the Goldsboro News August. And lastly, about January or February, you know, we had a problem on South Slocum Street down there with Mr. Sam at the mini mart, and it was deplorable, and we gave him some things to live up to. I'm here tonight to tell you that Mr. Sam has lived up to those things, y'all. They were a group of us women. Yes, we women, we're out there all the time, riding around and looking, you might say we are nosy, but we're not. We are fulfilling the role of a citizen of Goldsboro, which all of us are required to do. And we have monitored him, we've worked with Mr. Sam. You need to go down and look at his store. It's clean, it's orderly, he has everything those people down there need. And they've said to me, Shirley, he's doing a good job for us. And yes, y'all said that he need to close and all of that, but you gave us a chance to let Mr. Sam do some good work. And I can tell you, as a weekly person going down there, it's clean, and he's got some of everything you need, from clorocs to washing powder, sometime he has cabbage and onions and bananas, and these are the things that the people that are not accessible to a store need. And he said to me on Friday, when I was there, he said, "Ms. Shirley," he said, "you know my..." You gave him that permit on the second of, February of twenty-three, the twenty-third of February, and it will expire on June thirtieth. I'm here tonight to ask y'all, in your infinite wisdom, to give Mr. Sam the same business permit you give me as a businessperson, a one-year permit so that he can operate. There are things down there that he wants to provide in the store for the people down there, but it's expensive. Why would we, he go to all this level if we are not going to let him have a full business operation permit? So I'm here on his behalf to say that when people do good, let's work with them. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Edwards. All right, we got mosquito, longevity, the Goldsboro Police Initiative, and Mr. Sam, so I got you down. Who would like to speak next? Mr. Sanford.
This is the last time I'm gonna speak on that subject.
Good evening, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Edwards.
Gentlemen, let me tell you a quick story, very simply. A council years ago decided they need a raise, but the city employers weren't gonna get but on a one percent raise. So you know how they got a raise? They stopped taking receipts in for their expense money. That's how it became twelve thousand dollars. It was nine thousand, and they got three thousand dollars with receipts. They took the receipt requirement away, and every month the council got a paycheck to equal twelve thousand dollars. The same thing's gonna happen right now. You're gonna vote yourself a raise.
you gave him that permit on the 2nd of February of '23, the 23rd of February, and it will expire on June 30th. I'm here tonight to ask y'all, in your infinite wisdom, to give Mr. Sam the same business permits you give me as a business person, a one-year permit so that he can operate. There are things down there that he wants to provide in the store for the people down there, but it's expensive. Why would he go to all this level if we are not going to let him have a full business operation permit? So I'm here on his behalf to say that when people do good, let's work with them. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Edwards. All right, we got mosquito, longevity, the Goldsboro Police Initiative, and Mr. Sam. So I got you down. Who would like to speak next? Mr. Sinfer.
This is the last time I'm going to speak on that subject.
Good evening, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Edwards.
Gentlemen, let me tell you a quick story, very simply. A council years ago decided they need a raise, but the city employers weren't going to get but on a 1% raise. So you know how they got a raise? They stopped taking receipts in for their expense money. That's how it became $12,000. It was $9,000, and they got $3,000 with receipts. They took the receipt requirement away, and every month the council got a paycheck to equal $12,000. The same thing's going to happen right now. You're going to vote yourself a raise, which we already know is an exceptional raise, because the survey that your HR person did says health insurance is not common for the city council. Now, that's $489, that's $5,868 a year. Now, some of you said I'm going to donate the money. Well, nobody's giving me $5,868 to donate so I can get a tax deduction. You shouldn't get it either. You're slapping your employees in the face. Give them 1%. Talking about Ms. Edwards, your sanitation workers are making $26,500 a year. That's $10 a week. Do you know what yours is going to be a paycheck? You're going to give the city employee 1%. Thank you, gentlemen. I want to let you know that my respect for you is dwindling because of simple fact, you're going to slap the people who do the work. Have any of you spent a day with the ditch digging crew? Have any of you spent a day with the firemen? Chuck, I know you rode with the policemen, okay? I know that you guys know that the backs of the city employees is what this city has been built upon, for the simple reason they went five years one time without a pay raise. Yet the council proceeded to do all these projects, but the employees never got nothing. Now they're going to get 1%? Gentlemen, I'm disappointed in all of you. The lowest paid people in this, in our workforce, the majority of them African-American. If they don't need a raise, I don't know who does. They're the lowest paid people in our workforce, and I'm disappointed in several of you for that reason. That you should be looking out for everybody. Treat everybody the same, give them the same raise you got, or take 1%. All you've got to do is just make that, take it out of the budget, and vote on it later. Let's see who votes on what. Vote your conscience. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening.
Good evening. I want to know from you, you, Mr. Allen.
Yes, ma'am.
When are you going to put the correct signs up in front of Wayne's Barrow House so we don't get hit, hurt, or almost run over down there? I am tired of begging for it, I am beyond tired of begging for it. I've talked to a couple of your council members, and I'm telling you right now, and I think I talked to, yes, I did, I talked to you, and I'll tell you, just like I told him, if it isn't done, and I get hit, and this is not a threat, I can tell you, it is a promise. I will bankrupt this city. I will bankrupt it. Y'all need to get off your dead rear ends and get something done down there before one of us gets killed, and it needs to be done as soon as possible.
Where are you trying, where are you trying to get to, from the Wayne's Barrow House to where?
From Wayne's Barrow House across the street.
To the restaurant, or to the other way?
Yes, to Max Way, anywhere on the other side of the street. It's wonderful, it's absolutely fantastic that you've got them set up for the drunks that come out at the other end of the street, and isn't it beautiful that you got them set up out front here?
What is it we have set up? Because I'm trying to figure out what it is, what signs you're asking for. What have we not done?
Pedestrian crossing signs, the little red cones, little yellow cones in the middle of the street.
Mayor, we do have mid-block.
Yeah, we do.
We do have pedestrian signs, mid-block.
But isn't it wonderful that y'all have them out here, mid-block, so you don't have to worry about getting run over? Well, I do, I do. I've got so many things wrong with me right now, that I have to use a walker or a scooter to get around them.
And I've seen you get around, and I'm just answering the question, okay? I also see at the Wayne's Barrow House, a lot of times, there's six or seven people standing out, you know, just outside talking or whatever they're doing, and I've seen you out there sitting outside.
Yes.
My question is, when you're trying, and when you get in your wheelchair, and it's hard for people to see you, okay?
Let me tell you something. I drove an 18-wheeler halfway through Texas. I could see a damn turtle crossing the road in front of me.
Well, I'm not worried about what you can see, I'm worried what can see you.
Well, if they stay off their cell phones, they could see me.
All right.
Because even sitting in that scooter, I'm a pretty damn tall woman.
Okay, I'm just going to agree with you, okay? We will check the signs and be sure we have proper signage, okay?
Well, I'm telling you, if it isn't done and somebody gets hurt, y'all are going to be the ones paying for it. You ain't going to have to worry about a raise, because we're going to take every penny you got.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
And that's a promise, it ain't no threat.
You have a great night.
I'd go for two, if you kill.
All right, Davis, please help her out and get back home safely. All right, would anyone else like to speak? I'm sorry, but you've got to have some humor, right? Yes, ma'am. Here's another humorous one right here. Good evening, Ms. Stanley, how are you?
Well, good afternoon, you nice-looking people. I heard you had some new members, so I'm going to take it real brief. I live out there close to Bosco Beach, the famous beach, okay? I've got a few complaints. I've been working with the council, they obviously can't get nothing done, okay? Mr. Allen knows, I talked to him, y'all have got an ordinance that they're not supposed to be running those little four-wheelers out there past 11 o'clock at night. I wasn't drunk on Saturday night when I saw them out there. At 2:00 in the morning, I got up and dressed and went there. I didn't get on anybody's property. And they told me that they were able, they, on the internet, that it operates 24/7. You might want to look into that, okay? I'd like to get some sleep. Now, Mr. Acock has been more than super trying to help us. Now, y'all need to get your act together. I ain't going to use the words of a lady here. My sheriff's department won't help me by enforcing your ordinance, and I've got documentation, anybody wants to see it, right here from the sheriff's department. You want one, honey? I'd be glad to give you anything I got. Come here. He's not going to back y'all's stuff, okay? So, that problem is there. Next is not just them wanting. They're using city and county property. They, to my knowledge, has no lease, correct me if I'm wrong. They just took it over, they fenced it in, and the land that the taxpayers has actually bought through the FEMA, they're using it for free. Yet, Mr. Martin, a black gentleman, has leased some land from the county and having to pay per acre to farm it. He's lost two crops this year due to the flood like that. Now, to me, that's discrimination. Y'all can't stop them, they're trespassing there on the city and the county property. I've got letters here again, where it's been sent out by Mr. Rowe, telling them to stay off the property. Now, somebody tells me, and the sheriff said, I've got to enforce the law, because the city ain't going to do it, and the county ain't going to do it. You've got Mr. Wumble, am I correct? An attorney that's being paid. Seems like Mr. Parker, who's the county attorney, and Mr. Wumble should be able to do something to help me without me spending my hard-earned money. Now, if I spend my money to correct y'all's problems, you know who's going to pay for it, don't you? It ain't going to be me in the end. I'm going to do like a lady, I'm going to come back looking at y'all. I ain't going to use her terms now. If you want a copy of the land that they're using illegally, by all means, here's a copy. I know my time is up, but you got a problem with safety.
So, Mr. Wumble and Mr. Stevens, what we really need to do is, if we could, is look at that. I think what she's saying is they're parking on city land. I don't think they do have a lease. I think we ought to do whatever we can.
And they're getting paid for it.
To enforce that. And, I mean, we have four lots out there. The majority of the land is the county's. You're right, we do have the four lots we have.
But it's still taxpayers.
But we only, we only do the city, right? We can't do anything about the county.
Y'all ain't doing that, but otherwise.
I got it. So we'll take care of the lots that are ours.
I'll come back next session to finish this part.
We're going to do everything we can to give those lots to the county, so you don't have to deal with us.
Well, somebody better do something, because I can't get nobody to do nothing. Y'all don't seem to have no power.
Well, we will do what we can to stop the law.
I've got a bunch of other problems, but I think my time's up, so thank you.
All right, thanks, Ms. Stanley. And we will respond back to you.
Next time, don't call me at midnight to come out there, because I went that time.
Oh, Mrs. H, he was out, he washed. Now, he, I mean, he washed, he was there.
And it was horrible.
It is horrible. I hear it, you're right.
And they didn't follow the ordinance about the water either, and get my mouth there. They pull out those RVs in water. They couldn't even see the road.
Thank you, Ms. Stanley.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak while we're going?
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, sir.
I have three things I'd like to discuss. The first one, I have an open letter that I'd like the city's permission to publish. I won't take the time to read it, because I only have three minutes. I'll give it to the city manager.
Thank you.
Also, I was here recently, and I suggested that the city should do a campaign to stop all the trash that litters our streets. I'm suggesting this kind of poster should be put on city department vehicles. I'll save the important time. Recently, the city honored an organization here in the city, and that was Drummers World. And those, Mr. Mitchell and those young people, they do something special for this city. I'm a former police officer, I worked in the juvenile division of a major metropolitan area. And I know the kind of work that he's doing with those young people, that the department, the juvenile division of this police department will never see any of those children. And that should be going on all over the city. I'm also, I'm retired now, so I'm also an artist, and I did some things for Orlando. And I presented it to him, and he said, he likes them, and he said, can I get some more? Well, I made some more, but I can't afford to do it all by myself. I gave him some, and I can't afford to do anymore, and this is what they look like. On the sides are the classical position for drummer's hands, for the drummers, and I have drums, and I don't know if you can see.
Pretty pretty neat.
I'd like to give it to them, I could surely get some help there. So all these pieces individually hand wrapped.
That's awesome.
So you have my contact information and...
Now, I'm just curious, what's the cost of that?
I'll just take a nice serious donation, and I'm sure, because I got here just in time to see that you have a little extra in the treasure.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else like to speak? Anybody else? All right, we... Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
Is this it, is this yours?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. You know, always come with a nice package for everybody.
You want us to pass it there?
Inside your package, I have a couple of things. The first thing is a website that I went to, and it's from the city of New Orleans, and it's called No Left For Life. And what it does, it talks about a program that they have, they implemented because of a lot of the gun violence and the things that were going on in their city. So I thought it would be good for you guys to take a look at it and see if it's something that we can implement here. If you look on page three, since they have had the program since 2011, 55% reduction in gang member-involved murders, and then it also talks about that big program that they have, kind of midnight basketball. But that's just something that you guys can take a look at. The second thing, and I talked a little bit to the mayor about it, but I just wanted to bring it to you guys' attention, is maybe having summer curfew hours to try to help with curbing a lot of the violence that we have on our streets. I know that it wouldn't eliminate it, but it's a start. And you'll see that the city of Odessa, Texas, is the first one you have. The New Orleans has a summer curfew in effect for kids under 16, and then also Kansas City has a curfew in effect as well. And then the second page is, talks about the advantages and disadvantages of teenage curfews. So these are all just suggestions to try to help kind of stave off what we're doing, what's been going on in our city. We know that July, last July, was the biggest month of murders. We had four last year, fiscal year in July, and we've had four in May. So if you take a look at that trend, we want to try to stave off that trend and not get any better. We just had one recent shooting, so we want to make sure that we can try to put things in place to help that. And then the last thing that I have is that, and this is being sponsored, and they're here, if they would come on up, Impact Team, come on up. They're going to be sponsoring a citywide prayer on Wednesday from 6:45 until about 8:00. It was going to be at the Fountain, but that proved logistically impossible, so we're going to be down at the Commons, how do you say that?
Cornerstone Commons.
We're going to be at the Cornerstone Commons. So these gentlemen here are the ones that, again, initiated that. They're working with me and organizing that, so I just wanted to make sure that everybody was aware of that event, and recognize these outstanding young men for doing something in our community. So I want to give them a round of applause.
Walton, just go ahead and invite people. Tell them what you're doing.
We would invite, we would like to invite all of you, and we would like to invite the city and anybody who wants to come. There will be a citywide prayer right down there, right out here at Impact Church, Goldsboro, the Apostle, Apostle Newsom, he will be praying, and we're just going to pray for a lot of the victims of gun violence that's happened in our city for the last couple of months.
Okay, we appreciate y'all doing that.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are you done, Mark? Thank you, Mark. Would anybody else like to speak? Okay, we're going to close the public hearings. And before we move to consent agenda, I messed up under presentations I had meant to get because of, and Mark reminded me, because of all the shooting and gun violence we had in May. I had asked Chief West to do a presentation, like just telling us kind of his take on where things are. So Chief West, before we move down, I'm sorry, I forgot about you earlier. Can you come up and just share with everyone? Because I'd like the audience to hear it as much as anybody.
Again, good evening, Mayor, council members. As many of you know, there's been five homicides this year, and two of those have happened a weekend ago, and they're two within 24 hours, and all five of these cases are currently unsolved. I want to assure the council and the citizens of Goldsboro that the investigators are working diligently on these cases and are following up on any leads or information that the public provides to us. If anyone has any information about these murders or any other crimes in the city or Wayne County, I encourage you to call Goldsboro Wayne Crime Stoppers at 919, or text at 919-735-2255. The police department will continue to utilize our current technology such as ShotSpotter and the tsunami cameras, along with new technology and information provided by council members and also citizens, to identify trouble areas and then concentrate our areas, or our efforts in those areas and resources. I'll continue to reach out to other law enforcement agencies through information sharing and request additional resources if needed. 10 months ago on the steps of City Hall, I made the following comments. Law enforcement cannot solve or prevent these crimes alone. It's going to take the entire community along with law enforcement to make our city safe. It's a partnership, and that is still true today. Police officers, city leaders, businesses, churches, and citizens have all worked together on several community events, such as National Night Out, Our Community Cares... Our Community Cares, Neighborhood Foot Patrols that involve council members that we've been doing for a couple of months, and also Operation Clean Satan that we did Friday that was very successful. All these events have been very successful, and more are scheduled. I'd like, again, to encourage anyone in the community that has any ideas or wants to be involved in these community events to please give me a call. You can reach me at nine-one-nine-five-eight-zero-four-two-three-one. That call comes to my office. And also, anyone that has any information on any crimes or any information that could prevent future crimes, I, again, encourage you to call Goldsboro Wayne Crime Stoppers at nine-one-nine-seven-three-five-two-two-five-five. Thank you for the opportunity.
Any questions? Thank you, Chief West. All right, with that, we'll move to consent agenda.
Mayor, council, your consent agenda consists of items D through U. We talked about all of those items earlier. Again, items D through U.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda items D through U.
Second. We'll call that, ma'am.
Mayor Allen?
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Bertan Foster?
Yes.
Councilmember Looney?
Yes.
Councilmember Ron?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Remy?
Yes.
Councilmember Apple?
Yes. Consent agenda is approved, and we're gonna move to items requiring individual action. Ms. Kay.
Good evening, Mayor, council. Item V is your budget ordinance for fiscal year 2017-18. A budget ordinance must be adopted each year in order to implement the provisions of a new budget for the upcoming fiscal year. The budget ordinance establishes the tax rate. It also establishes special taxes which may be levied during a fiscal year, such as a special downtown municipal district. Passage of the budget ordinance is an annual occurrence. No budget for the fiscal year can be implemented without the formal adoption of the provisions of this document. The budget ordinance reflects decisions made by the city council during its budget reviews and discussions. The budget ordinance assures compliance with all pertinent state fiscal laws. The specific authorizations grants to budget officer are the same as we delegated in fiscal year 2016-17. Also, the finance director and assistant finance director are authorized to sign all pre-audit certifications for budgetary appropriations as required by general statute. Council met with staff on several occasions to discuss the fiscal year 2017-18 recommended budget. During those sessions, council discussed not increasing the tax rate, utility, and refuge fees. The upcoming budget does include a stormwater fee of four fifty per month for residential and commercial customers effective July one, 2017. The recommended budget includes increase in the golf fees. Cart fees will increase from twelve dollars to thirteen dollars per rental, and golf membership dues will increase by ten percent effective July one. Breakdown of the recommended budget by fund is, the general fund is a little over, is forty million, five eighty-two oh thirty-two. Stormwater fund is one million, seventy-three thousand, six seventy-two. Utility fund is sixteen million, five seventy-four, six ninety-three. Community development fund is four hundred and four thousand, nine twenty-two. Downtown developmental fund is seventy-one thousand, three twenty-six. And the occupancy tax fund is one million, five thousand, six hundred, for a total recommended budget of fifty-nine million, seven twelve, two forty-five. By motion, adopt the attached budget ordinance for fiscal year 2017-18.
All right. Any questions, Kay? If not, you have a recommendation?
Move to adopt.
Sir.
All those that favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. The budget is adopted.
Thank you.
City manager's report?
Mayor, council, I have no report this evening.
City attorney's report?
No report.
Mayor, council, report. I'm gonna start with Ms. Acock.
I just want to remind people of the town hall meeting in District Six and District Two, which is Mr. Broderwell's district, tomorrow at six-thirty to eight at New Hope United Methodist Church. Looking forward to answering questions and hearing a lot of input about things that we could be doing better.
No comment. No comment.
Mr. Williams?
I just want to thank all of the family, the citizens here that actually have reached out to the young men's families who've passed away recently. I want to thank DeWash Flip and his staff for washing cars and donating those funds to the family members. I want to applaud all the businesses that have got involved with the summer youth program and, you know, mentorship. And just want to, you know, I hope that everyone in this community can, you know, continue to try to work on, you know, some of this violence, you know? Just, you see a young man, a young woman, you know, talk to them, you know? Give them an opportunity to, you know, learn something from them. And that's all I have. Thank you.
I just have two things. One is, I just want to congratulate the Impact Teens for what they're doing. And also, people are looking for solutions. There's nothing wrong with a curfew. Any of us, wherever in Korea, we knew how to live under a curfew. And those are solutions. If they come from the community, they're, they're a lot more palatable than if they come from us. And I appreciate it, and I thank you for thinking about it.
Ms. Stevens?
Just like to take time to thank our employees of the city. Mr. Antonio and Mr. Don from Public Works came through my community this past weekend and handled a septic and sewer system problem that was going on in my neighborhood. And I'd like to take time to thank them, just because they don't, a lot of people say they don't get praise and thoughts that they should. But I'd like to take the time now to say thank you, and also to Mr. Patrick Lechner, who was around and helping being a superintendent, as well as the other superintendent, Mr. Don, being on the job. And that would be primarily it, if you couldn't hear me. So, like I said, I'd like to thank Mr. Don, Mr. Patrick, Mr. Antonio from Public Works and from being on the job this weekend and taking care of the city. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. I have three things. On a positive note, the Wings Over Wayne, we just completed probably the most successful, best Wings Over Wayne we've ever had here. And I want to thank everybody who came, and I want to thank everybody who worked so hard to make it so successful. It was a great, great event. The weekend after that, we had the Dillard alumni here, and I think that was just equally as successful. They had a great parade downtown. They had a lot of good functions. And I think everybody was really happy, and I think they were really pleased with that. So, those are two really good things that are happening in our community, and I always like good first. On the not-so-good side, we have had a lot of shootings. And I really believe that our biggest problem we have in this city today are these young men who have no regard for life, no regard for their life or anybody else's life, apparently, and are, you know, are just shooting. And they're shooting because I guess, I don't know, I guess they don't have a better way. They don't know a better way. And my thought process is, we can talk about it all we want to up here. Y'all can come talk to us. We talk to you, but we're not gonna fix the problem. We've got to figure out some way, somehow, to get to these guys on the street. And there are people like Impact Teens, I mean, I can't go out there and do it. And most of us can't go out there and do it because they're not gonna listen to us. I want to try to figure out how we can resonate with these young guys that there is hope, that there is another way other than drugs, that there is another way other than gangs. I don't know too many successful gang members. I don't know too many successful drug members. You either end up in jail or you end up dead. And to me, somehow, we got to convey this message to these young men that there's a better way. The one thing I would tell you, that when the young man got shot on Hollow Street Saturday night at one-thirty in the morning, I was there. I saw him, put him on the stretcher, as a father, as a mayor, as a human. I never, ever, ever want to have to see that again. I mean, it's the worst thing you can ever see. And nobody should have to experience that. And by all accounts, that was a great young man with a great future. And so, my plea is, is to anybody that can help, and we're gonna, we need to reach out to the churches. The churches have got to do a better job. But I don't know how you get the churches engaged. But we gotta, as a community, we've got to figure out how to get in there. I don't know if it's fifty kids, fifty young men, I don't know if it's a hundred, I don't know if it's three hundred. I don't know how many there are, but what I know is, there are people, and I'm not even talking about trying to arrest them. I'm not even talking, I'm trying to, I just want them to quit shooting each other. Let's just quit shooting each other. And, you know, because the problem with shooting each other is everybody suffers. You either die or you get hurt. Your family suffers. The guy that did the shooting, for the rest of his life, somebody's chasing him, and they're gonna catch him eventually. So, they're either gonna catch him and kill him, or they're gonna catch him and put him in jail. So, I mean, really, everybody suffers. Nobody wins. So, we got to figure out how to get this message to these young men. And so, what I'm pleading to you and anybody else that can help us is, how can we do that? How do we do that? You know, the city can put whatever resources we can put, but we got to know what to do. I mean, that's my belief. And the police department's not gonna solve it. The city council's not gonna solve it. The community's gonna solve it. But we got to better engage these young men. And if nothing else, let's just have a ceasefire. Let's have a truce. So, let's quit shooting. So, I plead to every one of you, anything you can do to help us, that we need to do that. We're a great community here, and this is really, really a bad deal in our community. So, I just ask anybody to do whatever they can to help that. And I think that's good. All right. Everybody have a great night. Thank you for coming.
When he shoots pool, he is both stripes and solid. He once beat Forrest Gump in table tennis. He always has an Uno face. He is in the Guinness Book of World Records for jingling. He is the most active man in the world.
I don't always play, but when I do, I play with Goldsboro Parks and Recreation. Stay active, my friends.